Good evening. Welcome to the Naperville City Council Candidates Forum. My name is Jacqueline Casaza and I'm a board member of the League of Women Voters in Glen Allen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen Bailey. I'm also on the board of the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen. This forum is a nonpartisan event and seeks to educate voters about important issues of environment and sustainability. We have all 11 candidates here. It shows you how important it is. It's co-sponsored by NEST, which is the Naperville Environment and Sustainability Tax Force, CCL, which is the Citizens Climate Lobby, and First Congregational Church in Naperville. A few housekeeping items. A table of campaign materials is over there, right next to the snacks and the water. Okay, I will. The bathrooms are in the hallway to the left, over there, as well as in the back and to the right. Index cards are available to submit questions to the panel. You can raise your hand if you need an index card. There are several gentlemen who have index cards in their hands who can hand them to you. We have a couple of prepared questions and then we'll have some audience questions. We ask that people hold applause to the very end. We have a lot of candidates here and a lot of questions to get to, so please hold applause to the end. The forum will use the format and rules developed by the League of Women Voters. I'm a train league moderator and I live in Glen Allen and therefore I cannot vote in this election. And I also live in Glen Allen, so I cannot vote in this election. Naperville's April 4th election is exciting. There are 11 candidates for four seats and those elected will serve a four-year term. Tonight's forum includes opening statements, prepared questions, questions from the audience, and a lightning round of yes or no questions requiring a yes/no response or very brief responses. Reminder, if you would like to submit an audience question, please raise your hand to receive an index card. Equal time is given to all candidates to answer each question. For the timed questions, a 15-second warning will be given and then our timer, who's in the front here, will stand up when time is up. Candidates will be allowed to finish their sentence, but if they continue, we will ask them to stop. Each candidate will present an opening statement, in turn proceeding from left to right. The seating order was determined randomly using a random number generator. After the opening statement, we will rotate to the right, so each candidate will be the first to answer a question. Now, the reason you all came to hear what the candidates have to say. So Candidate McBroom, would you please begin with a 90-second opening statement, followed by Candidate South?
Thank you for having us tonight. Joshua McBroom, I'm for Naperville City Council. I currently represent you on the Naperville Park District. Where at the Park District, part of our mission is we are environmental stewards. And as far as my platform for sustainability, I mean, I'm going to be the first to say I'm not an expert on environmental policy. I had a nice, long meeting with Carol and NEST and I met with Brian Groth, our utilities director. And my intention is to work with both of those groups, with our city staff and NEST representatives, and make sure there's a balance. I think that we all agree, I hope, if we could get towards more renewable energy and clean energy sources, I think that's something that we all can be on the same page on. And if there are economic solutions that don't burden the taxpayers, and I think there are plenty. I think NEST has a lot of good ideas that I heard. And as well as make sure that, you know, we have an issue of affordable housing. Let's make sure that our, you know, be very careful that our utility prices are as low as possible for our seniors and our businesses as well.
Okay, hi. I'm Ashley South and... Hi, I'm Ashley South and I'm also running for Naperville City Council. I am running for a thriving Naperville in our local businesses, in our neighborhoods, and in our city services, specifically around sustainability. I had worked in finance for 15 years and was managing Zell in addition to working at Northern Trust. I have my Certified Treasury Professional designation and have read the Sustainability Report in its entirety and I am committed to its mission. I also drive an electric car. I shifted my focus from Wall Street to Main Street when I founded a community magazine. So I am committed to my vision of a thriving Naperville by leveling the playing field for small businesses and looking at business development in both North and South Naperville, assisting folks in mental health crisis, and finally by getting the city to commit to going green by adding it to its mission statement. I've got a strong financial background, policy mind, and am fully committed to prioritizing our Sustainability Report and getting the city to do so as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashbak Hussein Sayad. Thank you so much, NEST and CCS, for hosting this wonderful event for us. I'm running for Naperville City Council because I have a passion for Naperville and for community service. And I have been doing this for the last seven years. I've been working on the ground at Grassroots on different projects. And I'm also the Board of Trustees for Naperville Public Library and have been very actively engaged with the community and fellow elected officials. And I'm also the Board Director at Los Angeles where I've been mobilizing food drive and community engagement there also. So my passion is not only to be on the seat just for title or, you know, to be there on that, but to get into the community and see what we as a community can do. As we have seen in Sen6 2020, I was the vice chair and I was the person who has mobilized around 150 organizations to work on Sen6 2020. And one of the reasons why we are top in the country is because we were together. We built up the coalition to work together and do it. So I'm here fully to support NEST and the other organizations to mobilize and work with them. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Lad Jayswal and I'm running for City Council. I'm an electrical engineer. I did my master's from Western Michigan University and I practiced what I'd been. Sustainability is close to my heart. I have two and a half electric cars, two and then a hybrid. Now, that's my platform, right? And then I have applied for solar roof. It's in backlog. There I have Tesla batteries, so basically not just generating power, but recycle. I believe in recycling of water and connecting to Naperville Sustainability. EPA, I have worked for Frac Air in the past, so I'm close to the industrial gases, water purification, you know, overall power distribution. So that's very near and dear. And we have a lot of pollution that we can, you know, eliminate if we make sure we plan our grid properly. So these are part of my sustainability, which you won't see in my catalog because I'm again pro-business and pro-development, but there is other side that I can contribute with my electrical engineering and executive MBA background. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Rebecca Malachi-Meslin. I'm an 11-year resident of Naperville and I have two young children, 11 and 13-years-old, in 203 schools. My platform really focuses on diversity, equity, and inclusion, but the cross-section with sustainability is strong. One of the things that I think about the most when I think about sustainability is the negative impacts of climate change on our most marginalized and at-risk communities. So when I think about what we as a city council can do is to think about the way, not only that we're spending tax dollars, but the way that we're prioritizing the needs of our community so that those who would be most adversely affected by the effects of climate change, pollution, are the ones that we're protecting the most. One of the ways that I hope to do that is to ensure that when we launch the next strategic plan, which is hopefully going to be in 2024, that we have true buy-in from all constituents. I really want this to be a Naperville where every resident is seen, heard, and valued. And in that process, that strategic planning, we really want to reach out to every community member to know what they want, to make Naperville their home, where it's a place that they feel safe and they feel it's also sustainable. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for hosting this event. So I am Jody Trudler and this is my shit. So I've been living in Naperville for 27 years. I've been working on sustainability for our community for 15 when I first lobbied against getting into our contract with IMEA. It's been a long 15 years. So my mission is to obviously make sustainability a priority for our community, whether that's through a mission statement or whatever method that we can do that to make sure that it is enforced and made a priority. So you all are familiar with the report that we've written, I hope. And within that report, we did a lot of research and that's what I have based my initiatives on. So first of all, building resilience through working to come up with a plan for clean energy, planning for our electric vehicles, transition, and safer biking, as well as making sure that our community is ready for innovative economic development across our entire community, as well as making sure that our community is included by working on improving community engagement and communication. So I've been at it for 15 years and I'm hoping for your vote on April 4th, number four.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Magna Bancel. I'm a long-term resident, 18-year-old in this Naperville. Naperville is my city, my home, and I love being here. I raised my family and business here. I'm a township trustee for the Wheatland. I'm currently serving there. I'm a co-chair for the senior committee. I'm a finance executive for a global technology company for 20 years. I serve for my homeowner association for White Eagle. I bring diverse perspective and intellectual approach to the table and that was with the platforms I'm running is public safety, mental health, fiscal responsibility, and lowering the property taxes. Economic development, more businesses to the city. These are my platforms I'm running for. I do support sustainability. We met the NEST team and they had wonderful ideas and the programs going forward within Naperville. So I love that. I believe in 3R, reduce, reuse, and recycle. Everything begins from home. My home is pretty sustainable, I would say, with 100% LED lights and glass fiber insulation. Doors and windows are completely tangy-sheen. So yes, thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Kelly. I'm running for reelection to council. I'm the one incumbent of the 11 candidates. I was fortunate enough to be elected four years ago and being here brings me back a little bit. We had an ACE forum, which ACE no longer exists unfortunately, but we have a forum here hosted by the ACE organization and we're talking about some of these very same issues that we're talking about tonight. And those issues are one of the reasons that I decided to run four years ago. So just a little background on myself. I'm an attorney now. I have a law firm downtown Naperville. And these days I do real estate law, but I started my career as an environmental attorney. So I went to law school at Chicago Kent College, College of Law, specifically because they have a program in environmental and energy law. And that's what I wanted to do with my career. I thought I'd work for Sierra Club one day and I started in that field. I went out west to the Lake Tahoe area and drafted environmental regulations for the state legislature. And then spent a couple of years working for a law firm focused on water rights and natural resources law before moving back here. My career went a different way, but I scratched that itch by running for and being on council and wanting to do something about primarily the electric contract we have with IMEA and other sub-issues like the renewable energy program is something I ran about four years ago and we've been able to approve, but we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It's a really good crowd and NEST putting this on. My name's Nate Wilson, running for Naperville City Council. Number six on the ballot. A little bit about me. My background's in finance. I currently work in tech and tech finance. I have two kids, almost 10-year-old and an eight-year-old. My wife and I moved to Naperville a little over 10 years ago. I got to know Naperville through my wife, who grew up here. Know about service through my father-in-law, who served as a chaplain for many years at Edward Hospital. Is currently still a deacon at St. Thomas. I currently serve as a commissioner on the Human Rights and Fair Housing Board. Also have volunteered for various activities in organizations. Currently with JC's, Naperville Salute. But honestly, just trying to use my background in finance to manage the city budget, make sure that we're fiscally responsible, support public safety, just honestly have some common sense when looking at issues, whether it's sustainability, meeting with some folks at NEST and continue to do that and Brian Groth at Naperville City Council, learn more about the issues. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alison Langabaugh, running for Naperville City Council. Thanks for having us here tonight. My husband and I moved out to Naperville 18 years ago to raise our family. I have three teenage daughters, all of whom cite climate change as one of their top priorities. My oldest is in fact studying environmental science at the University of Washington. I have been to every council meeting since 2019 because I legitimately like this. And so I've seen quite a lot of sustainability topics over the years, whether it's, you know, solar or EV or straws. There's quite a lot. So as a councilwoman, I would want to bring sustainability to policy decisions. Would want to be a responsible steward of our tax dollars so that we can continue to deliver those excellent city services that we've come to expect, like turning the lights on and flushing the toilets. So that means we need to focus on infrastructure like wastewater and of course the IMEA contract. We also need to talk about development. We need a good balance of residential and commercial development and make sure that developers are actually looking to the future and putting a future focus on their designs. And finally, focus on those shared experiences and needs like biking and running. We know that walkability is an issue. I value good governance. I would make informed decisions that involve the stakeholders and experts and I would use facts. So again, I'm Alison Langabaugh, running for Naperville City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Madhupal and I'm also a candidate for Naperville City Council. We have lived in Naperville for over 34 years and I was a teacher in District 203, Lincoln Junior High Science Teacher. Later I served on the Board of the Naperville Library Board of Trustees for six years, two of it as its president. Currently I serve on the Board of Martin Avenue Apartments, which is a senior community next to Edward Hospital. As a forward-thinking city, Naperville has the responsibility for taking a leadership role in adopting policies and practices that offer sustainable options for the life and city. These efforts have to happen at all levels, big and small. Our community must understand and adopt practical ways of reducing its carbon footprint. Our city government should reduce its own carbon footprint by supporting solar and wind energy, energy efficiency in its building, smart energy options for city-owned vehicles, incentivizing the repurposing of vacant buildings. We should always look ahead to new technologies. I have a unique understanding of this community and have the skills and knowledge to guide decisions to ensure that the city future is as bright or brighter than it is today. I'm a nonpartisan candidate. I'm now looking for your support. Thank you.
We're going to move on to the prepared questions now. To read the first question, we're going to start with Candidate South and then again move to the right. First question is, what specific environmental and climate change threats to Naperville concern you the most? How do these threats impact the most vulnerable? And what can Naperville do to mitigate those impacts?
So I think our threat right now is actually self-made. As many of you know, 70% of our energy is coming from coal. It's our dirty little secret. I think so few people know about it. I didn't know about it. You guys are probably more informed than most. We, as part of the IMEA, also own 15% of a coal plant that was newly built while the rest of Illinois is closing down coal plants. As we plan for the future, I am worried about the impact on our kiddos. I have a three-year-old. He's going to be going to school very soon. We specifically moved to Naperville because of the schools. It's a destination for people with kiddos and our families. So I think that the threat that we have is really, why are we burning coal to power those kids' schools? Does that make sense? Are we okay with that? No. What can Naperville do to mitigate those? Commit to going green, adding it to their mission statement and looking at every piece of business relative to that. We're going to build a parking garage? Great, let's put in EV chargers. Thank you for your time.
The increase in global temperature, according to NASA, it has worldwide, you can see the temperature rise at least 1.5 degrees. The heating of our planet is reflected in recent months with Chicago's temperature. And we can see the, you know, weather, how things have changed now. And our strategic planning must include this impact of warm climate, weather change in our future planning. And this is an impact of our electric usage for air-conditioned driving, usage of rates, and the need for new technology for heating and cooling. It is impact, its impact on the most vulnerable, such as areas like homeless people who have been, you know, suffering there. So it is going to be a more impact to those people. And we need to work together to have a positive impact for those communities who are vulnerable, who cannot afford electricity, home, and all those things. So we need to work with some nonprofit organizations to take care of those people.
So one of the biggest pollutants is your lawn mower. It is, but we don't pay attention. I understand coal and all the energies we need to transfer. I'm going to answer that in my second question. But here I'm going to address on what are the nearest problems we have. The two-stroke agents that we use for lawn mowing is the biggest pollutant after your cars. The reason why I know that is because I have provided environment protocol gases to test these and it's not good for our health, the fertilizers. We don't need green grass lawns. I'm not saying we have to change the lawns, but the reality is we need natural grass. Why don't we grow plants in the backyard? Now, it can be sounding revolutionary, but the reality is, these are the nearest threats. And if we can do baby steps as a community, because again, the government should not be forcing, but as a community, if we can come up with a plan where if we can eliminate at least 20, 30% of lawn mowers, I think we have won a very big battle. That's in summer, we can't breathe clean air and the noise all day, right? So that's my answer. Thank you.
So when I think about what the greatest threat is, I actually come at it from a slightly different angle, which is that I think the threat is the lack of knowledge and I'll speak to what Ashley said around our contract with IMEA. All of you that are here tonight are well-versed in this. You know it inside and out. Jody's been championing this for, I think, all of us that are at all of these forums and sharing her knowledge with us as NEST has. But I think the greatest threat is ignorance around our relationship, around our ownership. And getting this information out into the community is something that you all have been working really tirelessly on, but there's so much more work to do. And I think that is the responsibility of the council. I think it is a responsibility of our elected officials, our boards, our commissions, to make this knowledge available, help folks become aware so that they have the opportunity to have a say. So they have an opportunity to speak up. And I know for some of you probably feel like you've just been shouting into the sky and no one's listening. But these kinds of opportunities like tonight allow us the opportunity to get more voices heard, put together that critical mass that's going to actually help us make the changes that are required for us to be sustainable and to revise that contract.
So environmental and climate change threats environmentally, we obviously face. We've just had three tornadoes in three years. So the storms are, storm season is becoming longer. And all of these threats obviously are a threat to our overall quality of life. And we are all going to be impacted. But we do know that those who are suffering with their economically fixed incomes, low incomes, they are definitely the ones who suffer the most. So they're going to be suffering the most from a higher electric rates as well as they are going to be the ones who are going to have difficulties becoming, preparing for, and responding to any of those issues. So again, I will reiterate what Rebecca just said. Our biggest threat though is complacency and lack of understanding and lack of knowledge at all levels, especially our higher levels. We all have been at this for many, many, many years. And our biggest threat is not being heard and not being listened to. And that's why I am running for council, because we need a voice on council and somebody who is knowledgeable enough, willing, and able to champion this issue.
I would say one of the threats I was looking at is the wastewater management area. So if we, that wastewater is going towards the Gulf of Mexico dead zone where which has added to the marine life. If we can educate, engage, and communicate to local leaders, partners, with the nonprofit schools community, that will help spreading the awareness about managing the wet and the dry waste from the home. And we are roughly around 55,000 households in Naperville. If all will do in their own capacity in working on reducing, recycling, and composting the waste, we will be having better consumption, conserving the natural resources, and it will certainly cost less to the city. In return, it will certainly cost less to each household. The city government and leadership team must develop and work these strategic plans. Yes, with growing traffic, we might be having more pollution, but e-bikes and switching to the electric vehicle is another solution to this. Thank you.
So I would say I think it's a very high-level answer, but at very high level, just general climate change is the biggest threat globally and locally here in Naperville. Jody mentioned the tornadoes. We just had a tornado in February in the Midwest. I mean, something is not right and something is not normal. And Naperville can't fix that alone certainly, but we can do, what we can do with the assets that we have and we can set an example, I think, for other municipalities, states, countrywide, other countries for that matter. The specific thing that we do have, and I've mentioned it, a few people have mentioned it, we'll probably keep talking about it, but it's really that IMEA contract in prior state. I mean, to me, that is the elephant in the room. And the impacts of that are felt globally through climate change. They're also felt down in Southern Illinois, where the plant actually is, by the folks who live down there that suffer the coal ash in the air. We don't have that in Naperville, but we contribute to it and force people to suffer through it down there. So I think we've got an obligation to do something for those folks, for ourselves. Anything we can do to reduce our reliance on coal and fossil fuels is the solid. I think we do have an opportunity to do that. IMEA is going to come to us for renewal and we've got to push back strong and try to make progress.
To me, the, some of the specific things that affect us in Naperville are kind of, as a couple of people have already mentioned, is storms and change, which has led to, as mentioned, tornadoes in the past year, which can also lead to flooding. Some of the things that the city is or can do about it is try to get money, federal grants, which we are trying to do, around $40 million, which is why I want to use my financial background to help, hopefully, in order to do it, which we can help build more infrastructure underground to take care of things being knocked out. Now, this also helps middle class or those on a fixed income because if things are knocked down or rates are increased, it'll help prevent that by getting such grants. Additionally, some of the other concerns that I had recently were all the recently train derailments that people, seeing the one in Ohio, which led to a lot of chemicals being underground when the authorities are telling people that it's okay to drink water even though animals are done. So would like to work with the city to make sure we're prepared for those situations.
Well, we know Naperville's not immune to climate change. The Rantry neighborhood is only now seeing financial assistance from the tornado that touched down two years ago. And there was a tornado that touched down a mile away from my house just last week. So it is hitting our bottom lines, our bottom lines as residents. So what can the city do? First off, focus on infrastructure. I mean, my neighborhood, I live in Park District. Our whole neighborhood was under construction last summer because of stormwater. South Julian was the summer before that. And, you know, there'll be a couple more neighborhoods this summer as well. So we need to stay on top of that infrastructure. Second is development. Second is development. I mean, developers should be future focusing, looking at solar and EV-ready. But also things like in the construction, like don't remove all the topsoil because that topsoil can absorb the water and help mitigate some of those stormwater problems that, you know, we're building for right now. Third is communication. I thank you for the three minutes with Nest that you've been doing at the last council meetings. Those are excellent and those give us as residents things that we can do because half the time we don't know what to do. And get the youth involved. If you could have youth make videos of those, put those up on TikTok. Because you get the youth involved, this is something that they are excited about. And start them young, get them involved with this, and then that will help. Thank you.
The threats that are, we are facing are no different than what other cities are facing, whether it's of extreme weather conditions, whether it's tornadoes, extreme heat, flooding that we have seen in the last few years. So these are threats, but I think there's another threat and that is trying to balance the business interest against what is the right thing to do. And I think that we need to be sure that we understand that we cannot have economic prosperity without sustainability in place. When we are trying to attract large businesses from around the country and to come and locate to Naperville, one of the things those big corporations are looking for is a good sustainability plan that the city offers. So I, we, I just want to be sure that we, we develop as a city, we have a climate action plan. We also adopt those practices where we are building infrastructure that is, that is amenable to, sorry, to sustainability, but also looking at our vulnerable populations, people who have respiratory diseases, older people who are unable to afford electrical bases and all. So the city bears some responsibility for supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I might have mentioned at the Fox Force, city saving, I think the finance director told me it's $55 million to replace the water treatment Fox Force that's leaking into our streams and into the Dupage River from the wastewater plant. So that would be an immediate, big spend, a big hurdle that we have to tackle. Couple of things that I've learned just being on the park board. You know, there is a balancing act and I'm a financial advisor. I'm not just a penny pincher, okay? There are some acceptable costs. And I'll, at the park, I'll give you one example, and it's Roundup. We don't use Roundup. And me being a little league coach and knowing, being in the little league world, I catch a lot of heat for that, right? We have weeds all over the fields. And I said to them, would you rather have your kid have a mouthful of Roundup? You know, so, and it costs labor and we have to send people out. And so there's one where I can't say it's a net financial positive, but it's worth it, it's the right thing to do. There are certain things that are, that do work at the park district. One, if you see in the natural grasses in the parks, those grasses do, I guess, clean the salt and the oil that comes off the streets, and we don't have to mow it. And so that is, it's a net environmental game and a net financial game. And I listen very closely to Nest and that's what I'm looking for. Show me how we can do that and I'm all for it.
Thank you for those responses. We will now move on to our second prepared question that will also have a 90-second answer. Just a reminder before I read the question, if you have an audience question you want to submit, please raise your hand and we'll bring you a card. So the second prepared question is, Naperville is currently contracted through 2035 to get our electricity from a supplier utilizing mostly coal power plants. As part of this agreement, Naperville also has an ownership stake in these power plants. This is Naperville's largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. What practical actions can be taken to help transition Naperville from coal to clean energy sources?
Thank you. So I just wanted to have a disclaimer that I am not an expert, but I'm learning and will continue learning and especially from organizations like Nest, who has done a great job in the last so many years. And I will continue to learn as well as take their advice on that. Based on our agreement, we can transit by 2026 and up to 25% of our expenditure from our current suppliers into more green energy-producing components. I want to do that. That is very critical for us. And at the same time, I would like to work with the consman Ian and Jody, my friend, and others who are working on this for so many years and make a difference. And we can build up a coalition who can work together and move forward for Naperville. Thank you.
This needs more than 90 minutes, so please excuse me. The coal plant, so the alternate of coal plant is nuclear energy. Unfortunately, Illinois state has a law that we cannot build more nuclear power plants. You can build smaller power plants, but you cannot build the bigger ones. Now, that's a dilemma. We live 70 miles from a nuclear power plant, but we can't draw from that grid. The alternate to that is, you know, public-private partnerships. One is your residential grids, obviously the solar power, you know, giving incentives. But the second one, the large buildings, whether it is government, whether it is private, have, or the parking lots, can we convert those solar? We give incentives, we buy the power from them and have battery storage. Arizona is doing it. What they do is they have distributed battery power system. So there are solar farms and then every five miles you have distributed battery, 20 acres go to the battery. And basically you can have a very clean energy. So that's, that's an alternative. But now let's, let's take this further. What else can we do? Maybe we can purify the coal, right? Have some alternate coal capture. But again, thank you.
So when I think about transitioning to clean energy sources, I think about the sustainability of those alternatives and the diversification of those alternatives, right? There's so many other options. And I will say that nuclear is the one that I think most people's minds go to in terms of the amount that we draw. And when I think about also the draw that we have currently and the other plans that are being put in place around an increase in electric vehicles, an increase in electrification of homes as opposed to natural gas, we're only going to see that increase in the grid. So trying to project out what that draw is going to look like, while also, right, finding alternatives that are going to provide the same level of service. Because as part of our mission statement, this quality of life that we're promising to our residents, we need to still maintain that high level. So I know everybody's talking about this balancing act, but I think the diversification is number one because we want to ensure that we know that into the future, there is a variety of sources that we can pull from. And whether that's on our own, using things like the schools, which I know there's some collaboration that's being discussed right now for solar energy, using those giant roofs that we all know that the elementary schools have, right? How can we get more solar panels there? But then also the contract with any provider ensuring that they are using a variety of sources to bring down that total.
Okay, so as we all know, this is a huge issue for us. And one of the issues that we've had, and one reason why it's not being addressed right now is there's a huge transparency issue. So there is information that we as a community, so far as an organization, have not been able to gather adequately in order to actually come up with a plan for transitioning. So number one, we need to get together a task force so that we can gather the information that we need. We can have all of the bodies sitting at the same table at the same time that need to be at that table to come up with a plan. Nobody knows what the future is going to hold or what that is going to look like. We do need to plan for alternative sources to energy. So, and that is one reason why I got involved in this 15 years ago also, is to help promote distributed energy. And so that's renewables, storage and more localized energy sources because that's what will make our community truly resilient and why I was so excited. And that was my original impetus for getting this all started back up again before my, like I did back in, for Naperville for Clean Energy and Conservation. So, yeah, I'll just move it there.
In supporting responsible and balanced transition from coal to clean energy is something we need to do. Coal energy is definitely reliable, chief, but wind and energy is great as well as the clean energy. And but we need optimal speed of 24/7 constant energy and the weather conditions like Chicago, we need, we don't want our heaters to stop at middle of the night. So here's some transparency transition is important. If elected, I would like to work more on the electrical issue, which is ending at 2035 with working with the engineers and the consultants to get at a better rate so that we can support more our seniors and getting lower-cost energy to the residents. As well, bringing awareness to the society, to the residence, school at the lower, at every level is very important. As the town chief trustee, that have been, we have been doing for several months, like collecting various fire extinguisher, the paper shredding things and several other projects we are already working on. Thank you.
So to answer the question of what practical actions can be taken to help transition Naperville from coal to clean, I think there's a few different things. First, it's something that's happening right now. Our electric department is in the process of hiring a consultant to provide options to the city council of what those possibilities might look like because we do need power. And so we can't just cut bait and have nothing in its place. So we're in the process right now of figuring out what those options could look like. Second, and probably most important, is just having a city council with the collective will to stand up to I M E A and say, no, we are willing to go in a different direction if you don't either play ball and make this better. And if you don't, we will actually follow through on doing something different. For I M E A and negotiating with them, I think we need to trust and verify. They've told me for the last four years, they're going to get better, we're going to get more renewables. And over four years, it's moved about 2%. When I first got elected, we were at about 9% renewables and today we're at about 11%. Not, not very good progress in my estimation. So I think we need to continue holding their feet to the fire. We don't want to let them do carbon capture, in my opinion. There's a long article in the Tribune recently about a week ago, so check that out. And I think our council at some point should push back on that as well.
So to answer the question, I think as we, we can look to try to get more, as I would to previously, try to get more money back from the federal government. It's our tax money after all, going back to, which could go back to our, our community. So when we rebuild infrastructure projects, as I mentioned, getting electricity more under the ground, rebuild stations to have those more accessible to solar power. There are also some existing ordinances. So I guess it would be up for a vote as far as whether to increase height for wind. So that's something that could be looked at and we'd have to leave that up to the people. But that, you know, that being said, I'm not, I'm not an expert. Would definitely be curious how to permanently move away from it. Because I would like to meet, continue to meet with Nest about the ways forward to do that. As other people have mentioned, it provides a lower cost and I'm concerned about those who are poor, middle class, those on a fixed income being hurt the most.
So as you all know, this expires in 2035. We've got a five-year cancellation plan. This next council is going to have to deal with it. Can't kick the can down the road any longer. So as a leader, I mean, we own a coal plant. So let me say that for the back of the room. We own a coal plant. It's one of the 10 highest polluters in the country. So as a leader in this and as one of the largest stakeholders, we can use that leadership and we can use that power to try to move off of coal and into sustainable sources as the tranches expire and before the contract expires. But then we're going to need to, you know, figure out how to, how to get out of it. We need to look at all the options. And I don't know what those options are, but that's where we involve the stakeholders and experts, council and staff, consultants, to try to figure out what the best solution is. And again, I don't, I don't know what it is, but I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and help try to figure it out.
As all of us know, it's not easy to get out of a contract. You can do it, but the price can sometimes be very high. So I think what, what is being proposed is hiring a consultant to look at the contract, look at what can be done. But we also need to be looking at alternate sources and come up with a plan as to when it's time, when we are able to get out of this contract, how are we going to move forward with providing the reliable electrical supply to our community? Because that is what our community expects. People live here because they know that this is the kind of quality of life that they can expect. I also want to be sure that we take advantage of all those federal programs that are available today. New York Times opinion column and the person writes that today, the biggest alternative energy that is being produced in this country is in Texas. And because the incentives are there, even though you would think that politically that, that community may not be very eager for this. But, so we are, there are ways available for us and we need to look at all options, but also be sure that technology changes so fast that we do not lock ourselves into some long-term thing because before we know it, technology will change again, we'll have better options. Thank you.
So yeah, as has been mentioned, a contract's a contract. I don't want to be in a long-term contract, so I'm for any, any legal means to get out of it. If it's possible, I've heard that there are federal grants. I'm all ears to those things. Maybe, maybe not for all the same reasons, I'd just like to be able to go to the market and then get the best price. And so I, I think that the city staff, I mean, I think they're all smart people. But, you know, I represent you, right? Just like when they propose a budget to me, I'm going to ask hard questions. And I, I need, you know, organizations like Nest to provide me with the data and the information to bring back to the staff and say, what about this? But, I mean, from the outside looking in and the conversations I have with staff, I think we are in a lot of ways leading and, and advancing green energy technology. And there's always more that can be done. But if there's a way to get off coal, I would, I'm all for that too. I'm for all, anything that gets us closer and faster to clean energy without burning our seniors and our small business owners and keeping our utility rates and keeping the lights on. I'm for all these efforts.
Okay, so again, it's going to come before us. It expires in 2035, so we need to start planning for this today. I will actually quote Jody on that, who says that this council needs to get in front of that and create a plan for overall sustainability to support our mission. The mission I'm proposing, to go green, and actually resource that and create a strategic plan around it. Now, as many of us have said up here, it will be my job to listen to the constituency and to understand how you would like to prioritize that. I think that we need to find that and embrace it. Now, I M E A will say that they can't switch from coal. They have talked about carbon capture. I don't think that's sustainable. One of the things that I'm proposing is again, getting that city to commit to going green and actually getting off coal. As part, it would be consistent policy as the global, excuse me, mayor's compact. We need to do the cost analysis. We've got to persuade the city to look into doing that cost analysis, white paper to find out where we're going and then understand how it is that we can then resource that and continue marching forward. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We'll move now to our audience question part of the program. We're going to do three audience questions. And at this time, we're going to limit the answers to 60 seconds. 60 seconds. So the first question, and we have many excellent ones, so thank you very much. They're sifted through over here and they're working through all the questions that you, that you have. Here's our first one. Many of our problems, congestion, traffic and parking, how do their base, a total dependence on the automobile? How would you develop a long-term plan to create a sustainable community where more people can survive without a car? Consider housing, retail and walking.
Okay, so having, having, so Chicago weather is the determinant. If I have to say the best weather for two winners, right? I would like to introduce two winners, but it is not practical. So if we bring in all the people downtown, that's high density. So if we have to partner So if we have to partner that, have more public transportation and that's something that as a community we lack. So introducing, and, and these are steps that we need to take more so now is introduce practical intercity transport and then have biking paths. But that's again, when the weather is good. And then promote electric cars or electric bikes, more, more on chargers. But again, that transportation has to be integrated. So that, that's, that's all I have.
In the interest of transparency, I am from Detroit and we love our cars. It's also why we have crap public transportation because they, right? You all know that story. So, but I will say that one of my major concerns, and again, thanks to some of the folks in the audience who have been educating so many of us about your concerns that have now become concerns that we hope to champion for you, bikability. And the biggest threat to bikability right now is safety on the roads. And so I definitely think that's an area where we can work in conjunction with our public safety officials to think about if we want to start making those transitions during the better weather months. For electric bikes and just bikability in certain neighborhoods, certain areas to and from work, we need to first address the safety, right? That has to be in place first. We have to have people feel safe on the roads. And I think that is a legitimate space where we can make some inroads. And wouldn't it be great to be a community leading in this area where we can be a model for other communities of how to do it? So this is one of my major platforms. I do absolutely want to develop more safe biking and I know Nest is doing a great job. I don't know if Mr. Craighead is here tonight, but he's doing a fabulous job on working on bikability right now. And also increasing public transportation. Again, this requires collective impact process, bringing people together so that we can come up with a plan, engaging many stakeholders, so we need pace, we need the city, we need community involvement. And businesses, we need our business community so that we can make sure that we're preparing and actually planning for that. So if we design it properly and create it so that it is safe, that is the number one priority, then absolutely we can become much more bikeable and much more walkable as a community. And we know this is what our community wants from our Nest survey that we did a couple of years ago. We know our community wants this and it is a definite need. So it's one of the ma- major five plans that we recommended in our Nest report as well.
Yes, e-bikes is certainly a very good idea. I also attended the presentation, the Nest we had and they had a wonderful program. I would like to work with that department as well to get some better infrastructure and more issue made of which we can have better transportation. Carpooling is another way, ride share is a good way. But again, I would like to reiterate that if we continue to our three Rs, our three R policy and more into the protection of natural resources, then we should be able to achieve more sustainability. But yes, that we are, we need to reduce more, less traffic so that we can have a better environment.
Yeah, as others have said, bikability and walkability are huge issues. And that was actually the, the very first issue that got me involved in city business was trying to find a safe way for people to walk or bike to school. So I'm just north of train tracks. You've got to walk down Washington or Mill and it's really not all that safe because you're right on the road. So we've been trying to get a tunnel for many years now and I'm still going to be working on that. But it, it's really critical. It's a difficult problem, right? We're, we're a suburban city that has some sprawl to it, so it's not that easy to fix overnight. But I think we need to keep working on it and do what we can, where we can. We also should factor in, we don't have a whole lot of space to develop, but any infill developments, I think the more we can do to have them help that hyper-local community so that people can get where they need to be. While walking or biking is good. We also shouldn't do things that encourage cars, in my opinion. So one, one issue at the moment is the Nichols Library parking deck and I know parking's tight there. I'm not a real big fan of that and, and one reason of many is that I think it encourages more cars where we should do the opposite.
I guess I'm not the only one that's met with Mr. Craighead. I had a, had a good conversation with them. He's, somebody has to fix that flat on my bike too, but anyhow, learned, I've, I've known several people, I'm sure others have, that were, that hit when biking. So part of that is just raising awareness. I've lived in, in the city in Chicago, people do a much better job of that, but people still get hit. Like kind of what Mr. Kelly here, here said, with you observe the white, you know, crosswalk signs, nobody stops, which is actually illegal to do. So, you know, trying to have those enforced, raising awareness to people. Another, I, I live on the south side of Aprilville where there's a long bike path that connects one, it's a good five miles. So perhaps trying to connect those, work with the parts in order to add more connections between the city.
Transportation looks very different post-pandemic. I mean, ridership is, is still pretty low on, on the metro. It is coming up, although the 5:20 AM is still not that crowded. You know, I think we do need to take, you know, bike lanes into consideration. Every road project should, should have bike lanes. I'm honestly not sure if the Washington Street Bridge is going to have those or not. It definitely should and we should think about Washington in general. Do we need bike lanes going down that? Because there's really no good connection from train to trail. And that would be great to be able to connect north to south. E-bikes are definitely an issue. They're super fast and they take up a lot of space on the trails and so make it nervous, you know, for a runner like me and for bikers, you know, just normal bikers. So we need to take those into consideration. I do think that we, the TAB, the Transportation Advisory Board probably needs to have the, the bike and pedestrian subcommittee reinstated again because that is something that people want to do. They want a bike more. I mean, you couldn't buy a bike over the pandemic because they were all sold out. So.
Living in suburbs, this is the price we pay. And in order to develop a plan for making our roads more pedestrian and bike-friendly, we need to, every time a road is being upgraded, road is being widened, those things should be kept in mind. In fact, I, when I wrote my four priorities, when I wrote safe roads for all people left, they said, what do you mean? Is that it safety? But to me, it, it's very important, especially with e-bikes coming into picture, making sure that we have a plan in place. And also making sure that there are places where we say, you know, there are multiple jurisdictions. For example, on Naperville Boulevard, when you're headed north or south, going between Maple and all the way to the expressway, there's no safe way for anyone to traverse that. So we need to work with other agencies and come up with a plan. You're building a new bridge on, or rebuilding the bridge on, on 87th Street, going into, going toward Plainfield or between Plainfield and Mora. We need to be sure we keep those in mind. So I think going from this point on, we need to be sure that we keep those in mind.
So I've always been an avid biker. I do a lot of single-trail biking, if you guys know what that is. And Knock Knolls has one of the best in the Chicago land area. It's small, Halos has a better one, but it's actually not safe bike riding. But I, I want to see more, more biking. I want to, at Park District, when we do a survey, the number one request is more walking paths. And then when we look at the city survey, the number one complaint is, is traffic. So, you know, whatever we can do to reduce traffic and, and increase, you know, walkability and biking, I, I love it. I think, kind of like what the Duce said, I mean, we can't just rip up all the roads in town, but anytime there's an expansion or redevelopment, I think we need to look at those things. I, I'd love to see more, more bike paths, more walking paths and, and move towards, you know, less congestion and less, less traffic.
My husband and I were married on the Riverwalk. We moved right downtown because we like to walk everywhere. When the pandemic hit, we walked all over, around the neighborhood, wherever it is that we could go. We went window shopping. That to me was part of the reason that I love living where I am. And if we're talking about long-term planning and considering housing, retail and walking, I think we can do that in other sections of Naperville. Sorry. Fifth Avenue Station is a great opportunity. We can create for housing and retail and overall walking hub for that area so that folks aren't coming down here. In South Naperville, do the same thing. I think that we can then further connect some of the sidewalks that aren't connected. Great example is Niqua High School, even just across to the shops at 59. So starting small with some of those things to bridge us and then longer-term strategic planning around that with our Naperville Development Partnership so that we can then start planning for those hubs and create for that overall walkability. Thank you.
So I've lived in different countries, India, Dubai and now in US. In Dubai, we had a major problem of traffic. And how did we solve that? Public transportation. And they made it very clear that, you know, that we need to have the best public transportation so that slowly people can move from their cars, on cars, to public transportation. And 60% of the people moved to public transportation and automatically the traffic reduced. People's time, everything got reduced, you know? So we need to be smart. We need to think of alternate ways where we can help community, then we can slowly move those people to that direction. And alternate avenues are very, very important. Biking definitely is, e-biking and biking and walking are alternate which we can have. Due to the weather in Chicago, in Naperville, we need to be, you know, little wise what we do it. So public transportation is the best. If we can provide that, things will be in a good direction for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for those responses. We're going to move on to the second audience question. And again, it's a 60-second response. What is the best way for the city to encourage homeowners, businesses and other institutions to put up solar panels and adopt other energy efficiency measures? Would you support stricter building codes and standards for energy efficiency?
A lot for 60 seconds, okay. I'm going to focus on homeowners and homeowners associations because I feel like that is, we consider that for most folks to be like our little governing bodies in our subdivisions. We're having issues right now because a lot of people can't even put up our yard signs until like two weeks before Election Day. And that's all dictated by the homeowners association. So in addition to them creating regulations, I think there's also an opportunity for them to promote, right? So if, I think we could create some great partnerships if we really identify ways in which we could give homeowners associations some leeway, some leverage if they need to change ordinances, if they need to just really be on the promoting side. I'm a big fan of how can we identify one person or one small organization that has a broad reach so that we're not having to reach out to every single individual person? Not that we don't want to talk to residents or want to hear their individual stories, but this is about maximizing our effort and our time. So much of this is done through volunteer time, not just our city council people, but folks like you and the community. So identifying those spaces where we can get the most maximum reach and homeowners associations would be a great place. So again, this ties into my campaign platform of community engagement, community and citizenship engagement. Again, we're supposed to have somebody on staff who is supposed to be working on a educational outreach campaign for these types of issues. There needs to be much more directed focus, especially with our commercial businesses who have a lot more financial opportunities for taking advantage of solar installations. There's a lot more financial, financing mechanisms that are available for commercial entities than there are for homeowners currently due to our contract. And so with that limitation, we should really be focusing on commercial businesses and promoting to commercial businesses because they have a lot more capacity. We get a lot more solar capacity into our community much more effectively with larger, larger scale installations. And yes, I would support stricter building codes.
I'm a homeowner, I'm on my homeowner association board for White Eagle and we are encouraging all of our residents to have a solar panels. I myself have a solar energy lights outside and I'm in the process of getting panels. And time today, we talk to those residents, how are the efficiency of the services going on with those solar panels? And they all are very happy about it and we encourage more and getting better rates and better choices for them to put this sort of on their roof. So yes, and we are educating other people to get more and more done. That would certainly help in reducing the cost of the utility bills and they are actually doing that. And the energy code and stringent building codes, I do support that and it does protect natural sources, but also they are safer for the generations to come and they provide smart design, safe construction methods that definitely reduces the property damages and our utility bills.
I'll take the questions in reverse to answer the second part on stricter building codes and standards for energy efficiency. Generally, yes, I'd have to see exactly what those look like and make sure they made sense. But generally, yes, I would support that. In terms of how the city can encourage more solar panels and other energy efficiency measures, I think the best way is incentives. So that's something, again, that I ran on four years ago was our renewable energy program, which has been in place for many years. But what I found out about five years ago, there was a balance of about a million dollars sitting in that fund that's funded by voluntary contributions from our residents that really wasn't being used in businesses. Commercial businesses were eligible for grants and a few had been used, but not that many. And homeowners at that time were not eligible. So we made a change about three and a half years ago to make residential homeowners eligible for that. And we've had a pretty, pretty good success. We've had many, many dozens of applicants over the past few years with solar installations added. I have heard there's been some pickups in the permitting. Some residents have expressed some challenges there and we've worked through on an individual basis, but generally we've got to make that easier.
I, I guess we're not the only one dealing with the HOA in political sense. There, there's a few, my, my biggest takeaway is just education. A lot of people don't know about the programs that the city offers, anywhere from light bulb replacement, which I'm guessing most people in here know about it, but many in the city don't, you know? It's going to reduce the cost, you don't have to burn your hand when you replace them, unlike myself, which I, you know, went through after we had to do some things in our, one of our rooms. But additionally, there's other programs that the city offers. For example, if you, on Arbor Day, the city has a great program to get trees at a lower cost. Also, if their power lines had to be cut down or a tree had to be taken down because of power changes, you can also have the city replace that tree for one that's not going to go quite as high. So a lot of it's just education, getting people aware of those things.
Right, so Naperville already follows the state standards, but they could go further. They could incentivize solar future-proof construction. In the long run, it's going to reduce our costs as residents, but also reduce the city's costs to, to make their buildings more efficient. I mean, think about it, like what are your kids, if they move back here in 10 years, what are they going to be looking for in health? They were looking for electric vehicle, you know, charging, solar panels, smaller footprint. So let's future build those things today so that if and when our kids move back, they don't have to incur those costs. And a lot of that can be done upfront to alleviate those costs later on.
I believe in the carrots and sticks approach. If, I think people do need some incentives to adopt safe technologies, things like getting solar panels. And if we have those and there is incentive available from the government or whether it's city or federal government, we should be taking advantage of that. And I certainly believe that for businesses to adopt energy efficiency and altering or modifying building codes to, to encourage businesses to adopt those practices, I think it's a good, great start. Again, incentives may be needed in order to encourage people to go in that direction. What I also see is that when people, you know, businesses do that, but when homeowners remodel anything, we don't have any way of knowing how we can, we should move forward. So we take steps that are appropriate for our environment. So I think having some guidance from the city would certainly help. So we, we definitely need to move in that direction. Thank you.
So I think it's a great question. In light of the fact that we're unsure if we can get out of this contract or how soon we can get off of coal, I think the focus needs to be on being efficient as possible with current energy sources. So. So, you know, stricter building codes, I guess, same answer as Kelly. I don't know if I can get a yes or no on that. I would have to look at it, and I have real concerns about affordability, and specifically for our seniors. So, I would just, would need to balance that against what would that do to the cost of living? So, and again, if it's net neutral, fine. Or maybe it's a small cost, but I don't want to price seniors out of the market. And, you know, a lot of the, we do have incentives at the city, and, you know, we need to realize that still, a vibrant local economy is what funds these things. If we want to get rebates or incentives, we need to make sure that our businesses stay here and their costs are low. So, it is absolutely a delicate balancing act. But, yeah, I would be open to things like, you know, building codes and being stricter, higher standards. Absolutely.
So, I do support stricter standards for building codes, yes. I'm going to actually break this into a couple of things. So, the businesses and institutions are 80% of our total emissions right now from the sustainability report. I think that we could include ordinances for new and build-outs. While we start constructing, I think it's important to incorporate a lot of what I talked about before, which is this idea of sustainability for our future. I think enforcement in that way, because it comes typically before planning and zoning, is a lot easier than within the residential code. From a resident's standpoint, unless they go in front of billing and zoning, it's difficult to enforce. So, I argue for the housing, that we really do need to build out that communication. We've got the solar panel, we've got recommendations in the reports such as ceiling or ducts, and the automatic thermostat, and a lot of this is very easy to adopt if we communicate it. Thank you.
Yes, I support the building code, and my short answer is community education. Education is very, very important. So, the people who are here in the room, they are getting educated, but outside world, they are not educated. So, we need to educate, we all need to start talking to 10, 20 people about this, and then only we can work together. And second is awareness, yes. Awareness needs to be created at a larger size. We need to use social media, we need to use every aspect of the thing so that we can create an awareness. And third is incentives, yes. So, homeowners as well as home developers, they need some proper incentives so that they get encouraged to use them. Thank you.
Yeah, so, education, incentives, and codes, but, you know, we need to introduce. Then there are alternates. We never talked about geothermal. So, geothermal energy, 10 years ago when I built my home, I kick myself today, I'm putting solar panels. If I had invested that $30,000 for the geothermal, I wouldn't need any other electrical system. So, there need to be some incentivization and education. We are far back for some of that. Heat pumps are the other ones. But if we have to introduce those, we need to bring the contractors up to date on those, educate them. If we, our peak usage is 343 megawatts. If we get 34 projects at 10 megawatts each, funded by federal, state, and local resources with a private-public partnership, we'll be net surplus, we can sell energy. So, we just need that nest to work on it and do a blueprint. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to our third audience question, and then we'll move to the lightning round after that. We'll start with candidate Tandler. The question is, 30% of the food produced in the US is wasted. Naperville's compost program is expensive, little-used, and not fully understood. How would you go about decreasing food waste in Naperville, thereby decreasing a significant source of methane from rotting food in the landfills?
Okay. So, yeah, that's definitely very important, and it is a huge issue, I agree. So, this is what my nonprofit actually focuses on, is getting us to produce and grow more food locally within our own community so that we aren't wasting as much. That 30% doesn't necessarily mean that we all are throwing our 30% away, but in the process, the more locally we can grow our food, the better. And then as far as composting, again, we do have a composting program here through Groot that is not really highly promoted, but it is also very expensive and is not cost-effective. So, I would love to see the city promoting composting much more, offering a composter program like they do the rain barrels, and making sure, again, community education. Community education and engagement is so critical to all of this in order for it to happen, in order to be at the scale where it's going to really make an impact. So...
Yeah, well, that's an issue. But in my case, we are 100% vegetarian, and I cook my own meal every day, so we know how much to cook, so we don't waste any food. We work with the local pantry to help them. Then we, as a homeowner's association board member, I, through our communication letter, we always try to spread the awareness about reducing their waste, and we work with the nonprofit organizations as well to help and awareness in the community. Yeah, I guess that's, thank you.
It's been a common theme for a lot of these questions, and Joey hit it on the head for this one in particular, education and outreach, I think, is so critical. It seems like it's something that's a little bit less in the public consciousness than solar panels or EV chargers that are just a little more visible and prominent. So, I think it's something that we really need to work on, outreach, education. And maybe it's something that should also be factored into that renewable energy program. If the cost is too much, there are ways that maybe we can help bring that down. Again, that's funded by voluntary contributions, it's not taking out of the general fund or anything like that. A lot of people in the town have been generous enough to support that on their own voluntarily. So, I think this is maybe a good fit for that program as well.
I guess I don't really run into that issue too often because I eat all my food. Including my kids. Even the kids' food. So, using all the time, or she's not happy. No, I mean, it is a lot about education. If you make, if you, you know, make your own or produce it, you'll see the immediate effects as opposed to like, you know, buying whatever and then ending up having to throw it away. So, yeah, the option is get it all, so.
That's really not fair to follow that. See, I would love to see the city expand its composting project program. I mean, I called them before, and it's just not very good. It's expensive, it's not very industrialized. I have family in Austin and friends in Portland, and it's amazing. Like, you can compost everything, like corn cobs, meat, anything that touched anything food-related, you can throw in the compost bin. So, you've got a small garbage bin, huge recycle bin, and then a medium-sized compost bin. It is amazing. And we need to have that here because if we, I mean, reducing food waste, I do your suggestion, that's good. But just like having it be able to be reused as, you know, on props and that. Like, that's something that we really should be looking for. It was on, you know, it's always been on my wish list, it's always been on my things that I wish the city could do, and hopefully, it's something that we could bring to Groot, you know, to have them do more.
Nate, I'd like to know how to use the cauliflower extra hard parts. I didn't, I was looking at it yesterday, like, what do I do with it? It killed me to throw it in the garbage, but I had to. And I'm looking at places like, sorry.
I eat all the apple.
But I'm looking at the program that Skokie recently started. They have neighborhood bins where you can go and actually put those compostable things in there. And I know, you know, we are not, we are accustomed to ease and everything looking pretty, we shouldn't see dirty things around us, but I think we have to start looking at those things and those options and say, what can we do? Trust me, I eat lots of things that I come into my house, but there's still food waste that when I throw it in the garbage, I just don't know what else to do. So, we do need to look at some other ideas, making composting a little bit less expensive and something that can be done in all weather. So, collecting sites, I think, would be a great idea. Thank you.
Nate stole my answer. I got three boys, we don't, they eat. We don't have enough food for them. So, I, you know, I'm not going to pretend like I have a good answer on this. If the compost program is expensive, let's find out how to make it less expensive and more efficient. And that's an area where I would sit down with NEST representatives and the city and, you know, find out what makes sense, how can we reduce the cost, and how can we get better at this.
So, the landscape is not just homes, it's grocery stores and restaurants. I think it's really important that we have those discussions and we incentivize what we can do for our restaurants and our grocery stores, specifically, even if there's an ordinance that's around that relative to food waste, or as things are starting to come up and be expired, how it is that those items then are either transferred to another entity that may be using them. We've got a lot of need here in Naperville as well, a lot of hungry people, and we've got pantries. It's a lifestyle. It is a lifestyle, California West Coast, just out there, celebrating a baby shower, and we are composting. The discussion that I had with my girlfriend was that it's actually good to put back into your yard, so we're not doing that. I understand that it's expensive and little-used, but maybe there's a discussion to be had about enriching our own soil. A lot of discussion about our topsoil, let's make it even better by putting that back into our yards. Thank you.
I serve on a food pantry, low-sen fishers. I know how to get the food to the pantry. It is very challenging. And wasting food, impossible, we cannot afford to waste food. And we serve almost like 6,000 people every week at those fishers, the food. So, we can understand, you know, how much critical it is. And we, as a family, have been very mindful of cooking and eating, because that is, again, you know, we don't waste a single drop of food item, I can say. 99.9% we make sure that, you know, we have it and eat up with it. Second, I want to develop a plan to compost food waste within the city limit by focusing on our downtown restaurants. Yes, we have seen a lot of people wasting food growing outside and all those things, but we can plant, and then we can implement, we can educate the community, and we can work together to get things done for us. Thank you.
So, there are many things, right? We used to compost in the backyard, but it's a dirty job, right? In the winter, you have to put it in your garage, it smells, you have bugs coming in. So, again, it's education, having the backyard. If I have less backyard, less greenery, less grass, and more of the plants, I could use that. So, having that, and then education, obviously. If we can incentivize all the restaurants, I think that's the biggest, the restaurant waste or the food, if we can incentivize, rather than charging their money, can we pay them money? Or can we have the low-sen fishers, as Ashwin said? How can we do that? How can we donate? So, more education, more collection centers, incentivizing recycling, and then obviously, depending on NEST. I mean, you guys are the experts, I would like to hear from you guys. I only know about my recycling at home. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I thought somebody was going to steal my answer, but they didn't, so I'm really excited. Schools. We meet a lot of children in schools, and somebody just went like this in the background, thank you. So, I was a school administrator for 14 years. We would do a Go Green program every year, and over the course of a week, we would ask students to, we tried to get our waste down to zero. So, that was not only food waste, that was also things like plastic baggies and lunchboxes, you know, lunch bags and things like that. But we really made it a fun project for the kids. So, we started off the week, we weighed all of their garbage, all of their food waste from the beginning of the week, and then every day until we got to the end of the week, trying to get to zero. Now, again, that's beyond just food waste, did not take into consideration cafeterias, things like that. But when we talk about education, and Allison pointed this out earlier, you know, young people and getting them involved, making them so aware in such a visual and physical way of what food waste looks like and what it feels like, and how they can have an impact is so empowering to children, and we need their buy-in because they're going to be the ones schooling us when they get home.
Thank you. All right, now it's time for the lightning round. As a reminder, the lightning round questions are to be yes or no responses or very brief responses. We're going to try to get through two lightning round questions, and we're going to start with candidate Bensall. The question is, would you be in favor of including electric vehicle charging and a solar roof for the two parking garages being planned this year? One on North Central College and one at Nichols Library?
Yes, I'm in favor of electric vehicle charging. They're two separate questions, right?
Yes or no?
Separate building.
Maybe.
Yes for North Central, but the city doesn't control that, and I guess no for Nichols because I don't want it at all.
Yeah, as Patrick said, city doesn't control North Central, maybe at Nichols?
I would be in favor regardless of whether we're in charge or not, but yeah, I would be in favor for charging and solar.
Charging and solar at North Central, okay, Nichols, I don't want a parking deck there.
I guess setting aside whether or not we control North Central College or if a parking deck happened, my answer would be yes, if those things did happen.
I think in general, we need more of these things, so outside of just these two, I would argue that we need to...
Yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and I am going to issue those things. Thank you.
Yes for North Central College and no Nichols Library.
Yes, if the Transformers can handle it.
Yes, if those things happen.
Thank you. We'll move on now to the second question, and we'll be starting with candidate Kelly, the that one. When Naperville's greenhouse gas inventory is completed this year, should we commit to annual progress to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and public tracking of that progress?
Yes.
Probably.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Yes, the van, costly.
For sure.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, candidates. We really appreciate all your answers and your participation in the lightning round. I'd like to thank the audience, we have standing room only here, which is just excellent to see all these people who are interested in this topic. That's excellent. We want to remind everybody that we're going to be having a similar forum this Monday for the inaugural, it's right here, 7:00 PM, the same place, so please come up for that. We also would like to remind you, I'm a legal woman voter's member, I didn't remind you to vote. We have early voting that's starting in the area March 20th. Election Day is April 4th, and you can also apply for a vote-by-male ballot still. So, please, thank you again for coming out today. And also been told...